Morning, everyone. A call is meeting in Lebanon County Commissioners's Order and our usual customary procedure is to observe a moment of silence. Thank you. What I mean?
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next item is to welcome public comment at this time. Is there any public comment? No, very none. Move on and we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting and executive session on May fifteenth.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second. Questions, comments regarding those minutes? If not, fall in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? And we've also, I've also noted here that we've had a request to add an agenda item related to taxpayer issue. And so we'll entertain a motion to add that item and maybe we'll just add that following the treasury report.
I'll second, but do we have information or what is it about?
Taxpayer issue that they're paying their taxes.
Okay. I don't know what it is.
Right. But we'll hear. So, motion and second, if you know all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and we'll add that following the treasury report.
Thank you.
Morning.
Okay, we had receipts on six, three and six, four of one million, three hundred fifty thousand, ninety one dollars and forty three cents. That brought us to a cash total of seven million, forty one thousand, twenty three dollars and ninety five cents. Our expenditures for three million, seven hundred thirty thousand, two hundred forty three dollars and six cents. Our tax claim was forty three thousand, three hundred and three dollars and thirty cents. So that left us a balance of three million, two hundred fifty seven thousand, four hundred seventy seven dollars and fifty nine cents.
Second.
Let's present.
To the second, any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye. All the same sign and that treasury report.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring forth a service issue or a, at least a challenge that one of our taxpayers had. It's a family farm taxpayer, Lebanon County, and paid a bill up for their taxes with one check for more than one tax bill. And he brought to my attention after an expo meeting last week and said that, you know, there's nowhere on this that says you can't pay more than one tax bill by one check. So this was compounded by, we mailed this back to him. And by the time he got it, now we're in the, you know, he's got an eighty one dollar additional cost. So I went to the office the next day, which was last Tuesday. And, you know, I offered to pay the eighty one dollars, but I didn't understand, can someone explain why this is not stated on a bill? And yet we hold people to that. And then to, you know, even to the extent of getting extra charges. So I, you know, we're in the eighth or ninth day of waiting and yesterday Sally called me and I understand, you know, there are other people in the office, maybe your deputy could have gotten back to you sooner. But nonetheless, I didn't get really anything other, other than it seemed like, here's why we can't do this, but I mean, my feeling is that this was not that big a deal, that it couldn't have been done. And so that's all. It's a service issue. I know everyone's clarity. He wants to do what he has to do. And I just wanted to get a final, you know, what's he have to be?
What happened with this is what he paid was two different types of bills. One was a January interim bill and the other two were our March bills. Our issue is we cannot issue, we cannot process the two different billing cycles in one batch. We have to do it separate batches. So therefore we need separate checks to keep the money separate. I mean, it's an audit thing. It's all kinds of stuff involved, but our collection system does not let us enter the different tax billing systems. They're all different timelines. Discount is different times, net is different times, penalty is at different times. So we have to enter them separate. So that's why we asked for another check. As far as stating that on our bills, people will not understand if I say you can only pay one bill on a check. So then if we have people that have, say, seventy properties and come in to pay that, we don't want seventy checks. They can pay it in one check, but only if it's the same billing period. Like January first, March first, and then we have August first. So they have to, because of the different billing cycles, we have to do different batches. And that's going to need separate checks. And I mean, it happens every once in a while when we usually, the people, you know, do another check for us and they understand it, but and if we can arrange it somehow to process it without impact, oh, we do, but we couldn't at this time of the year.
Well, so during your tenure, that has never been an exception made for this kind of an issue?
No, we always got a second check.
Okay.
Unless we had other ways. If we're, if we're busy and there's cash in the vault in our switching around. But if this time of the year, after discount there in those couple of days, we don't have that. I can't cash a four thousand dollar check out of, even out of my vault, because I don't have that much took in it. So we couldn't do it. We certainly do try if we can, but we couldn't.
So, bottom line is he owes the eighty one dollars, even though he mailed it to you on time without any instruction and you also want the second check?
That's our policy.
Okay. So, you know, I, I just was looking for, some, some offices look for reasons how they can help people.
We do try to help people many times.
Ways to say yes rather than, you know, here are the list of reasons why I can't do it.
And then I start saying yes for one person and then the next ten people I have to say yes to.
Only for that kind of an issue, which you admit rarely comes up. So anyway, all right, I've had, I've done what I've done on behalf of this taxpayer.
Okay.
I didn't ask, ask them to come in. I just thought we could handle it without.
Okay.
Anything else?
You're not asking for a vote for anything?
No.
Yeah.
Okay. Shell, you're on. Please introduce yourself for the record and you may proceed.
Excuse me, are you going to continue the conversation or?
No, no, she just asked me a question.
Okay. I thought we were finished.
Right. Michelle Snively, Director of Human Resources, Personnel Transactions, Resignations and Terminations. Mason Novobowski, Caseworker One in Children and Youth Resignation effective May twenty third. Adrian Wetzel, Caseworker Supervisor, Children and Youth Resignation effective May twenty eighth, last working day, May fifth. Hallie Davis, Caseworker Two, Children and Youth Resignation effective June twentieth. Bradley Hershey, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail, Resignation effective June tenth. That was changed. I'm not sure if I got to all of your forms, but that date changed. Sue Jordan, Personnel slash Payable Clerk at the Jail, Retirement effective August first. Adriana Horcher, Full-Time Central Booking Agent in the District Attorney slash Central Booking Department, Resignation effective May twelfth. Melody Calderon, Full-Time Central Booking Agent and District Attorney slash Central Booking, Resignation effective June seventh.
Salute.
Second.
Motion second. Questions, comments? Not fall in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Those resignations, terminations are approved.
Under Changes of Status, Transfers and Promotions. Danielle Mater, Promotion from Caseworker One in Children and Youth to Caseworker Two at the rate of one thousand seven hundred and twenty seven dollars and seventy three cents by weekly effective June eighth. Ebony Brown, Promotion from Caseworker One to Caseworker Two in Children and Youth at the rate of one thousand seven hundred and twenty seven dollars and seventy three cents by weekly effective June eighth. Nadine Smith, Promotion from General Clerk C in the Clerk of Courts to Second Deputy Clerk of Courts at the rate of one thousand two hundred and sixty two dollars and sixty eight cents by weekly effective June ninth. Kristen Swiger, Change of Status from Full-Time Therapy Eight at Renova to Casual Call Direct Support Eight at Renova at the rate of sixteen dollars and eighty seven cents per hour effective June eighth. And Giovanni Lantini, Transfer from Full-Time Deputy Sheriff in the Sheriff's Office to Full-Time Correctional Officer in the Jail at the rate of twenty two dollars and seventy one cents per hour effective June ninth.
Salute.
Second.
Motion second. Questions or comments? Done. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. And those changes are approved.
Under Other Transactions, Area Agency on Aging would like to hire Seth Wolon as a part-time mail transporter at the rate of twelve dollars and thirty eight cents per hour effective June sixteenth. Area Agency on Aging would like to hire Mary Brox as a full-time aging case eight at the rate of one thousand three hundred and thirty three dollars and sixty seven cents by weekly effective June twenty fourth. Department of Emergency Services would like to hire Austin Bellman as a full-time Assistant System Administrator at the rate of two thousand dollars, three hundred and six, two thousand, three hundred and sixty two dollars and eighteen cents by weekly effective June sixteenth. And Renova would like to hire Samantha Dennis as a casual call direct support eighth at the rate of sixteen dollars and fifty four cents per hour effective May nineteenth.
Salute.
Second.
Motion second. Questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. And those transactions are approved.
Moving on to Salary Board, Motion to Approve All Transactions Previously Grand Plus the Following. Debo Endehard, Salary Increase, Alex Meese and Amiki Thomas, all three salary increases, all three full-time Deputy Sheriffs in the Sheriff's Office, all three graduated from the Deputy Sheriff's Academy, all to the rate of twenty dollars and sixty two cents per hour, all effective May twenty fifth. Todd Hirsch, Longevity Detective Sergeant in the District Attorney, Doug Detectives Unit, a nine-year longevity, one-time payment of one thousand five hundred and seven dollars and fifty one cents, effective June twenty seventh.
Second.
Motion second. Questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. And those, that would be recommendations are adopted. Anything else? Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
Would you please introduce yourself for the record and then you may proceed.
Good morning. Holly Lakey, Administrator for Lebanon County Mental Health and Intellectual Disability, Early Intervention Programs. I'm here this morning to present and ask for your approval, fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five, Provider Contract Amendments. There are twenty-two contract amendments in total. That's thirteen for early intervention, two for mental health, five for intellectual disabilities, and two for building maintenance for our building at two twenty eighth and seventh street. The amendments were mostly to cover increasing funds to allot for higher utilization for services for individuals. It's a total of two hundred and forty thousand dollars, six hundred and twenty-four. This will be covered through our current allocations and budget. Therefore, we are not requesting any additional heavy tax dollars to cover these expenditures.
I will salute.
Second.
Always put a smile on my face.
Glad.
Jamie, do you have questions?
The Wellspan, the furniture for the crisis intervention at Wellspan, is that a split cost with other agencies? Or is that primarily, is that exclusively your agency's cost?
That's exclusively for our agency for crisis intervention. So that's for the new walk-in center to provide some more comfortable furniture for individuals that are kind of there for a longer period of time as they wait for inpatient hospitalization. So Wellspan had requested some additional monies, one-time monies.
It's serving your population. It's not, it doesn't get split. You're done where some of the others on the side.
It would be preferable to split between those county agencies that are utilizing crisis intervention, but it is not split. It is, I mean, directly from mental health based months.
All right.
And the program we have, okay. Are there any additional questions or comments? Very none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. And it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
We've resignation for a, I don't know.
Oh, I do not.
Okay. I'll, I'll put that in here. It was on the agenda.
I certainly can do it, yes. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sure.
So we did have an MHI DEI Advisory Board resignation. This is for Ann Thompson and Ann has been a member of our board since nineteen ninety-six. She has served as the Secretary under Richard, we call him Shorty Fields for many years. And then under Sarah Fuller, Ann's dedication and commitment over the last twenty-nine years to serve her community exemplifies her character and passion for caring for people. Ann has supported MHI DEI staff and agency through many challenges over the years, and she will be great in this.
And do I remember that she was in the military?
Yes, she was in the military. She was in the troops. She has served our community and served her country for so many years. And I still appreciate Ann. I will miss her on the board. She's not gone, so we can still talk to Ann. But I really appreciate everything that she has given to everyone in her lifetime.
Well, I really respect her and it would be a pleasure to make a motion to congratulate her on this accomplishment as well as we're going to miss her.
Absolutely.
We'll accept her resignation with regret. Second.
Okay, motion is second and additional comments. And please extend our appreciation for her many years of service. We'll send her the best wishes.
Thank you so much.
All, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Have to bring it. Good morning.
Good morning.
Please, I see. And if you would introduce yourself for the record and then you may proceed.
My name is Breanna Regal and I am First Deputy at the Lebanon County Coroner's Office. I'm here today to present the software licensing agreement for Quincy Technology Services, which I think you guys did receive. Okay, all right, awesome. And so Quincy, so like, let you guys know what it is. It's an electronic case management system. So all of the coroner's pieces get entered into Quincy. It's something that we use on a daily basis. And it enables us to stand for, to do standardized data entry, query, query and data searching and comprehensive report generation. It also provides secure permissions and audit trails, so we're able to see who entered, who entered information, who changed information, et cetera. And using this case management system means that the cases are always easily acceptable, or, so sorry, accessible. So if we have someone calling, like a member of the public or Mexican, it's easily searchable. Like, for example, I think it was like two weeks ago, I had someone call in about a case that was like four years old. And I was able to pull that case up in seconds and give them the information they needed. It would be a lot more difficult and hard to find the information without this. But yeah, that's what that is. And then also hoping to get updated date with the invoices as well, so we can continue to use the service.
Is this part of your budget or is it somehow reimbursed?
Um, it, I don't believe it is part of the budget.
It's not reimbursed. It's, it's just a cost of the.
Yeah, I didn't know if there was a charge that covered it.
There are fees that the coroner receives for desertification fees, et cetera, but those have been ongoing for years.
So this is outside of the budget then?
I'll move to approve the payment and catch you up with Quincy.
I'll second the motion. I would like just a brief comment.
Motion second. Are there any additional questions?
Yeah. Was this a, something that just came up that it wasn't, I know, when did you start? Maybe you weren't even here when we were at?
I was not here when I started.
I understand that.
I think it was two thousand seventeen that I started, so it's been ongoing.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm a little confused, but I understand there's a lot of transition going on and there was some records maybe that weren't where they should have been, so. Yeah, all right. I guess we have to do what we have to do.
All right, pair. This is what, what I'd like to do, but this brings us up to twenty-four. So the twenty-five budgets, we didn't get it into that.
No, the annual will be somewhere around five thousand dollars, I think, which we'll have in the twenty-sixth, but we'll break that in.
A second.
Any additional questions or comments?
This is something that other counties, other coroner's offices are using, as you know.
Yes, not everyone does, but it is considered kind of like this, the best practice and most do use one.
Pick the best name for those that remember the show, Jack Klumman. Pretty clever.
All right, I think very decent.
All right, thank you.
Anything additional? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. That approval. Thank you. Anything additional?
I'd just like to add that, thank you for your efforts in putting all the office together and getting it up and running. Appreciate your work.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I'm not criticizing. I just have to understand the money.
I do. I do totally understand, yes.
So, and I understand your situation, so thank you.
And I can promise that it will be, it will not happen.
I can tell. I can tell.
Appreciate all your work to, to, to the transition. You think about it, that we've been able to get along. Dr. Yocum has been our coroner for how many years? I don't even know. It's, but it's many, I know, and, and operated it basically out of his office and or if he and, and taxpayers got great value, but we're still getting great value, but it's time to change and appreciate the, the work you're doing to put in that change and make it go well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey. You're Susan and company. Good morning.
Morning.
Please have a seat, introduce yourself and your colleagues for the record, and then you may proceed.
Good morning. I'm Susan Eberly, President of the Lebanon Valley Economic Development Corporation.
Nathan Grayville, I'm with, on behalf of First Citizens Community Bank.
I'm Eve Venus Durker with the Lebanon Valley Economic Development Corporation.
Welcome.
So this morning, we're here to present a next generation loan, because a next generation loan requires the blessing of the commission, the highest elected official, officials, which is the commissioners. So I'll let Eve and we take it away.
So today we're representing the Ryan and Kirsten Hare family, also doing a business under RKH Holdings. And you are probably familiar with the Sycamore Spring Orchard Facility. They are a family that recently agreed to purchase the property and take over that role and continue that legacy that they, the Hess family has started many years ago. So their, their hopes is to expand upon the, the current business. They're actually having a grand reopening starting today. So if anybody's has a little availability in their schedule over today through Saturday, they're having festivities there. But the next generation loan will be working with First Citizens Community Bank. They're providing the base of their financing as well as a PDP program. But we are here today to represent them and to ask you a blessing. It is an eighty-two point four-six acre property located at nineteen oh one Thompson Avenue in Jonestown.
Make a motion to approve the farm loan?
Yes, the amount for the next generation loan will be six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars.
Second to motion.
Motion is second. Are there any questions or comments?
Just glad that it's going to be continuing in, in the same historic way that it's, that we've come to know it.
It's Susan. Maybe I cut you off. Were you going to say anything? No, I was going to say six hundred and forty-nine thousand, but fuck, someone asked then. So we're good. Thank you.
Official questions, comments? Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. All the same sign. You have approval on the best wish. Would you please introduce yourself for the record and then proceed?
Good morning. That Ugle County Solicitor. I have two items for consideration by the board this morning. The first are two separate agreements with Maximus. This is pertaining to the Controller's Office and they directed the indirect cost recovery. The first service agreement is for a total of three thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars per year. And the second agreement is for ten thousand dollars per year. And Mr. Metley's indicated that is an increase of two hundred dollars per year, so six hundred dollars over the course of three years. I don't know if our controller wants to elaborate on some of the services that, that Maximus provides, you know, the ones to go and detail what cost recovery we get for using the IT service and everything else in our budget. That, that two hundred dollar increase is the first increase we've seen in six years. Wow, so.
What is the ten thousand?
The ten thousand?
Yeah.
That's in the second, there's a second agreement, service agreement, yeah.
Do these separately?
Yeah.
I'll entertain a motion to approve their misagreement.
Also.
Second.
Motion is second. With this agreement with Maximus, questions or comments? None? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. And that approval.
That encompasses both of the agreements then? Both? Okay, you want to do the second one then for the ten thousand?
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions? None? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign.
The next item that I have is a deed from the County of Lebanon to the County of Lebanon in consideration of one dollar. This is involving transactions in Heidelberg Township at the DES Tower site, as the board would remember several months ago, I was, I was here and we've had discussions with the Taylors involving a land swap. There was a land swap that took place in which the Taylors have property right next to where we have our new site for the tower. And so what this deed does, being that it's from the county to the county, it just combines the legal descriptions into one parcel. So it's just a procedural mechanism by combining it into one deed.
And then the total is four, four point one five nine acres?
That sounds correct, yes.
Make a motion to approve the deed for the tower site as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Questions or comments? None? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All the same sign.
Approval, thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
You. I think that brings us to you.
All right. First items I have are two hotel tax requests. We have requests. First one being from the Drunken Smithy LLC, which is a business in the London Valley Mall. They are requesting funds for the Viking Meat Fest twenty twenty-five at the London Valley Mall. They attached a project description. They are having this festival in an effort to revitalize the London Valley Mall, support the many small businesses within the mall. They began hosting these free festivals as a way to invite the community into the mall for a weekend of family-friendly funds. They've had the Yule Bazaar in twenty-three and twenty-four. They forged Fantasy Berry Festival in twenty-four, twenty-five, and a Spooktoberfest in twenty-twenty-four. There is, on the description, third, third paragraph down describes that they have customers travel from parts of Pennsyl, other parts of Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Maryland and beyond. They also cited some in, information or data from Placer AI, which you might know is the data base that is used by, is in London Valley. And the weekend that they had a festival, they had three hundred and sixty-eight individuals that were both at the mall and a hotel. Placer AI tracks phone data, not individual data, but where people are moving to and from. So they're requesting a So they're requesting a, uh, twenty-five hundred dollar grant with a total project cost of five thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Motion is second, question?
Yeah, well, I just find some of their entertainment's simple, but boy, is it entertaining. There was a young lady who walked on quarters, quarter soap, yeah, court soda bottles. And, you know, at the end, she jumps off and goes ta-da, you know, it's just that simple. Do you know that has over eight thou, eight, eighty thousand views on my, uh, Facebook page, and I find that phenomenal? And it's draw, things like that are gonna draw even more people, they're so creative with what they're doing. It's, it's, uh, I'm, I'm glad the mall is thriving again. If I didn't make the motion.
Clearly drawing a lot of people to that mall.
Yeah.
Second, the motion, I have a comment, sure. Um, so I agree, and I, you know, Visit Lebanon Valley, uh, also does grant requests of the hotel tax money, and, and often they're, use the money not just for folks that, you know, put heads in beds on requests, but they also acknowledge that you have to keep the venues alive and strong, such as, you know, the, uh, Javager and things like that. Um, so this is what kind of does both, I think, and, yeah, it answers both of those. And, you know, at some point, I'd go on the record saying, I wish Visit Lebanon Valley could do all the grant requests, and then they, there'd be all, you know, consistency across the board, but, you know, that's for another day. And.
Additional comments, questions? Not all in favor, twenty-five hundred dollar request, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side, granted.
The, uh, second request is from, uh, Miss Morgan's Milkweed Antiques. Uh, and it's a, uh, a show that they are having at the expo on October third and fourth called As the Crow Flies. This is their eighteenth year for the show, it's their fifth year being held at the expo. They have two hundred vendors coming from all over the U S selling antiques, handmaids, et cetera. And they, um, they attached the, the handout cards that they have, which shows more about the event. And, and a budget for their program, they are asking for a five thousand dollar grant on a thirty-six thousand dollar total budget.
I'll salute.
Second.
Motion is second, questions or comments?
Just that, uh, based on the treasurer's report to us that there's twelve thousand dollars in the fund.
Anything else? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same side, and, uh, request is granted.
Yeah, I have a list of disabled veteran exemptions from real estate tax according to the criteria, uh, that's been met by these individuals. They are Charles McIntyre of Alden Way, Lebanon, Kathleen Giacovino of Chestnut Street, Jonestown, Nicholas Light of State Drive, Lebanon, Reginald Holmes Daisy Drive, Lebanon, Zachary Given Grace Avenue, Lebanon, Constance Snaveley Janet Avenue, Lebanon, Jack Fritz Junior Goldmine Road, Jonestown, Mark Emberger Tree Line Avenue, Grebixburg, and Elliot Maldonado of Fox Ridge Road, Lebanon.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, questions or comments?
Except a comment, uh, Memorial Day event, Constance Snaveley played taps very beautifully. Uh, I just haven't seen that her name for a while, and I've heard it to her twice in a week. Yes, I'm seeing.
And she only learned that not too terribly long ago, she caught herself, I believe.
Additional comments, questions, if not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The same sign, and those exemption requests are granted.
Okay, the next item I have, uh, we've received, this is regarding workforce development board. We received a letter from the Workforce Development Board, which Lebanon is a part of, regional board. Uh, there was an audit conducted of the board, and they discovered that one of the appointed board members from Lebanon County no longer meets the requirements to represent the category. Uh, Rick Scott, who is the, uh, executive director of Volunteers in Medicine, uh, is on the board, however, the requirement is that we appoint a business category member, which would be an owner of a business, chief executive, business executive, or employer. Uh, I'm not sure if Rick Scott was that when he was appointed, and now is not, that may have been the case. Um, but in any case, um, because of this audit, uh, they need action for you to, action to remove him from the board and reappoint another. I know that there have been some recommendations from the chamber, uh, who've been contacted and awaiting some, uh, replies. So today, the action would be to, to take care of this removal, and then another, hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have a replacement. So no fault of Rick's, just the way the, you know, the way the chips fell.
Let's go.
Second.
Motion approved, uh, Rick Scott, and, and thank, uh, for his service. Again, he certainly was a great candidate for this board, but doesn't beat the, the current, uh, qualification guidelines now, so we certainly understand. So all in favor, please say.
Come in to me. So this was an audit that brought this out.
Yeah.
So, as the liaison, was there any other, uh, boards that were impacted, or was this the only case that in, on the board?
Um, I, I can't answer that, I'd have to find out for you.
Just curious.
I can ask, I, I never thought to ask that.
Jamie, Sue, also.
Oh.
One comment, I had, uh, nominated, uh, Rick Scott with a board position, and they did a thorough review on his criteria at the time, that criteria has not changed at all. So this is very, uh, this is really surprising that they said that he doesn't need it, because they reviewed it when they accepted him.
Okay.
His status hasn't shifted, right? That's why I was, if the audit was, you know, more expensive than just this particular.
Well, in their, in their letter, they cite the fact that Volunteers in Medicine uses volunteers only, so they're not quote hiring people, and that was, I think, the.
But that was the case.
What they discovered was really probably very minor, but doesn't meet their criteria. Just suspicious, any other questions, comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Same side. Yeah, but it's all in service.
Okay, and the last item I have is, we are, uh, some reimbursements for the America Two Fifty P A Commission. Uh, there are a number of reimbursements due to Bonnie Loy of two hundred and eight dollars and forty cents. And then also an invoice to Record, I think, was for hats or t-shirts?
T-shirts.
T-shirts for one thousand eight hundred nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
I'll make a motion to approve reimbursement of the expenses for the P A Two Fifty.
Second.
Motion is second, questions or comments?
I know Bonnie, uh, was intent on, or adamant about getting, uh, the shirts done in Lebanon County, so Records and Inville, Susan.
The bump, yeah, they were selling the Vekkan out days, so.
Okay.
Very aggressively.
She had one on, too.
Just got hats yesterday. Took that, so anyway, uh, any additional questions, comments? None, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same side.
Dan's gonna have one assessment board item for you, to adjourn this meeting.
Move to a shirt?
I'll move it. Well, second.
Oh.
Anything else to come before the board, before we adjourn? Jamie, you know, just one other question, should we not be looking at a burn ban, we haven't had rain for almost a week now, so.
It happens for a second.
That's good filler there.
Stand adjourned, and.
Oh, yes. Call this meeting of the assessment board to order. And then Dan, I understand you have a request concerning Elm Street Menonite Church in Myers Town.
Uh, it's actually a building that's in the city.
Oh, okay.
The actual address is five oh one Elm Street. Uh, it's in the first ward of the city, it's Elm Street Menonite Church, and they are, uh, they have put in a parking lot, and have asked for exemption on that parking lot, as most parking lots, uh, church parking lots have been.
Is this right then, it has the address of Myers Town on here?
Mailing address, yeah, that's the mailing address, the, the other address is just below it. Property location is five oh one Elm Street.
Okay.
See that? So it's our recommendation, Matt, Matt can speak a little.
That's right, I, I discussed this, uh, with Dan, and, and, uh, in the course of the case law, and we've had a number of requests. If, if there's a request for a parking lot in conjunction with a church, the recommendation is that it can be approved, as it sounds.
And it says that it's adjacent to the church, and it's being used for overflow parking, or something of that nature?
Right, yeah, and if you look at the picture on the G I S picture, I think I said, all those buildings are removed with just a flat parking service.
Okay. Is there any, uh, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that exemption.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, same sign, if not, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Is there something?
Nope.
Oh, I thought you were.
Nope, I was just.
Okay, motion is adjourned. I think it's adjourned, rather.